Good evening and welcome. My name is Taylor Kingman. As President of the Board of Trustees of the San Angelo Independent School District, I would like to welcome all of you who are present at tonight's pre-agenda board meeting. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of SAISD. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most of the items on our agenda this evening will be discussed tonight and voted upon at our regular board meeting. As members of the SASD Board of Trustees, we are here to set goals, listen to reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the district. Please keep in mind that the meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees, held in public, not a meeting of the public. However, we do have a public comment item on our agenda that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team on an item that is not on our action agenda or an action item on the agenda, an opportunity to do so. Please provide your name and contact information and the specific topic you wish to address on a public comment form located in the back of the room prior to the start of tonight's meeting, should you want to offer public comment. Please listen carefully and comply with the following rules, so we can move through this part of the meeting efficiently. Each speaker will be given a total of three minutes. The district will provide an official timekeeper. Please respect the privacy of others and refrain from identifying students, employees, or other community members by name. Disruption of the meeting will not be tolerated at any time. Comments on any subject, whether positive or negative, must be courteous and respectful. Comments are limited to the specific topic you indicated on the form and filled out. Any speaker with a specific complaint about a district employee decision or operational issue should present that complaint through the appropriate mechanism, which is the district's formal grievance process. Also, please understand if you offer public comment, that the board cannot reply to you except to thank you for your comments, since the matter has not been posted for discussion. I ask that you please refrain from talking while others are speaking, and I also ask, as I remind my fellow board members, to please turn off or silence your cellphones. Again, thank you for being here and your support of SAISD. We do have a quorum this evening. All of our board members are present but Mr. Gallegos, who had a work commitment and will not be able to be here this evening. With that, if everyone will stand and join me, we'll do the pledges of the United States Next on our agenda is public comment, and no one has signed up this evening, so we will move forward with conducting our Finance and Audit Committee workshop, and I will turn that over to Mr. Dindell.
Thank you, Dr. Kingman. We start off with a report tonight, and the first report we'll have is a Management Oversight Report on Transportation, and Mr. Livingston is here to help us with that tonight. Welcome, Mr. Livingston.
There, I'm live now. Good evening, everybody. I'm coming to the end of my first year here as the head of the Transportation Department at San Angelo ISD. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm going to try to tell you a little bit about the Transportation Department. Talk to you a little bit about some of the events that we celebrated in the department this year. August 8th was our annual in-service training that's required of our bus drivers prior to school opening. October 21st through the 25th was National School Bus Safety Week, and we did do a luncheon for our folks during that week. November 20th, we did our Employee Thanksgiving Meal. We had some folks join us. I believe Dr. Brandon and Dr. Moran came over and helped us celebrate Thanksgiving with our folks. December 18th, we had a holiday meal for our folks prior to getting out for the Christmas holiday. February 10th through the 14th, we celebrated Transportation Employee Appreciation Week, and that's during Love the Bus Month during February. Believe it's Wednesday, we're having the annual Easter egg hunt over at the Transportation Complex. And May, I believe, I didn't have the date when I did these, but we have set it, I believe it's the 14th, we're doing an end-of-the-year cookout for our folks. I wanted to add a little bit of national statistics about student transportation, and this is just a very small snippet of what those statistics are. But daily, more than 480,000 yellow buses travel the roads in the U.S., carrying students to and from school. They carry more than 25 million student passengers daily. That makes it the largest mass transit system on ground. Saves an estimated 2.6 billion gallons of gasoline each year, and that comes from the American School Bus Council. And the yellow bus meets 48 federal safety standards, which is more than any other vehicle on our highways. And here's some San Angelo ISD statistics. Currently, we have approximately 3,900 students routed to buses here in the district. Those are eligible students. We actually have a lot more that are eligible, but those are the ones that have signed up for transportation. Our daily average ridership's about 1,400, and this does not include our transfer students. It does not include special activities, passports, and those kind of stuff. We do carry them on 35 general education buses every day. Those buses run a two-tiered system where they carry elementary students to school first, and then they go back and take secondary children to school. We have currently 17 specialized vehicles carrying our most precious cargo, and those are our students that have some special needs. I believe about 300 of them, I didn't put it on the slide, but that's what the numbers sticks in my mind. From August 1st of '24 through April 4th, when I pulled these numbers together, our vehicles traveled 293,000 miles just with sports and activities. That's not our home-to-school mileage. Currently, as of the 11th, we have six bus driver positions, four monitor positions, a shop supervisor, and a service manager available in transportation. We currently have about four people in training. A couple of those will probably have their license before school's out. So we attended the San Angelo ISD Job Fair on Saturday and was very pleased with the results that we got from that. Talk about the fleet a little bit and the additions that we made this year. We've got two 72-passenger general education vehicles that'll be coming sometime between now and June, and one new special transportation bus coming that is wheelchair-equipped. We added two new transit style, school bus-constructed travel buses, which is somewhat new to San Angelo ISD. One of them, I believe, we had here for your meeting last month, so. We did purchase a new Freightliner Ultra Coach Liner for that out-of-town travel, and we do have a couple of new Ford Expeditions coming sometime next month for student travel. So looking into the future a little bit, we have begun with our TransFinder upgrade, and that is our routing software that we use. Route Finder Pro that we currently have and has been around for years is getting ready to go to bed, so to speak. So in the next couple of years, we'd be forced to make the upgrade, so we are doing that. We had our kickoff meeting a couple of weeks ago, and my routing folks are attending TransFinder University on Wednesday and Thursday this week, I believe, to learn how to use the new With that, Service Finder is also going to be upgraded, and that's our service, the program that they use in the shop to keep track of all the repairs and so forth that we do on our vehicles. And Stop Finder implementation is going to come with that upgrade to TransFinder, and that is our parent app, and parent communication app, I should say. And there's a lot of different ways we'll be able to use that, and excited to be able to give our parents a little bit more at ease when they know when their kids are on the bus, and we'll be able to send messages to them a little, well, a little easier, a lot easier, to get those notifications out when, you know, we have buses that are running behind and so forth, or buses that we need to double up or double back, or whatever the situation may be. So I think that's something that's been lacking here, and that's something I'm excited to bring. It'll be sometime during the next year. I'm hoping it'll be fully live by the time we come back from Christmas, but with all the new things, we want to make sure that it's running well before we put it out there to our folks as well. Something that we have not had on our buses is live GPS. We've had with SmartTag, we've had passive GPS where we can track a bus as long as the tablet's in the bus and it's turned on. If the tablet's not on, we don't have any way of tracking that bus. So we're talking to vendors right now, and I think next month, we're going to come back with a recommendation to move forward with that live GPS, because with the upgrade to TransFinder, SmartTag's no longer going to work with TransFinder, so we also have to find a new option for that as well, and this will all be in one package. And then August 5th, we've got our back-to-school meeting planned, and this coming school year, we do have a day at the semester break in January where our folks are scheduled to work that day, so we're going to have a mid-year in-service that day as well. So I'll open it up to questions, if you have anything for me.
Questions for Mr. Livingston?
Our bus that's in Fort Worth being repaired, any update on that? The one that was T-boned?
It's actually up in Tulsa. It went back to the, but it's been about a week since I heard anything on it, and I get the same answer that we've had, you know, a couple more weeks, a couple more weeks. They've had some issues. The new doors don't fit on the older buses exactly the way that they were, so they have to revamp the door mechanism. As of about a week ago, they had all the parts in necessary to do that, so hopefully this time will be the last two weeks, estimate I hear, so. Hopefully, it'll be back by August.
Mr. Livingston, we do have some more vehicles coming in in the next year, the way it plans out, is that correct?
Correct. And we have that in the budget for the upcoming year as well, so.
Okay, good. Additional questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Livingston. We appreciate your input, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Mr. Walters, and he is going to give us the summary findings of the TEA Intruder Detection Audit, constructed by the ESC staff.
Dr. Moran, Dr. Kingman, and members of the school board, as always, I'd like to thank you for your time and effort supporting SAISD. For the last two weeks of March and the first two weeks of April, we had two IDAs or Intruder Detection audits. Any findings and corrections, if any, have been addressed by campus administration.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Mr. Walters, I understand you're on a short leash right now. Will we get to see you next month?
Yes, sir.
All right, good, good, all right. All right, with that, we'll move forward to our financial reports and our bills and accounts. If you'd like to turn to page nine on the financial reports, shows our, currently shows our committed fund balance of $11,699,907. Most of that is committed to construction projects, $8 million of that, which will be coming out probably of that committed fund shortly. We still maintain a steady $53 million proxy of an unassigned balance at this point. No questions on that. We can move forward to page 12, which is our Revenues and Expenditures Report for March. We're in our seventh month of the budget cycle, which should put us somewhere around 58% completion of that budget right now. Revenues stand at 65%, which is slightly ahead, and that's because normally, we see all of the local funds collected basically December, January, February, and so all those funds come in. So we'll run slightly ahead for a month or two, and then the state's going to come in and make us whole over the rest of the year as we move forward. Our expenses right now stand at 61.5%, which is slightly ahead of where we should be, but there are some contracts that we pay yearly, and they have already come out of our budget, so that should come down in the next couple of months as we move forward through the budget cycle. There's no questions on the Revenues and Expenditures Report. Can move forward to our checkbook report for March. That's on pages 14 through 31. Not sure if anybody has any questions on any of those. If you've got questions at this moment, we can query Dr. Brandon. If not, I'll make sure you include those in an email to them, and they'll be explained, obviously, pretty postace. He gets back with me quicker than I usually read my emails, so that's a good thing. So anyway, thank you for that. Dr. Brandon, if anybody does have questions, make sure you get with Dr. Brandon on that checkbook. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary for this month. If not, we can move forward to page 32 through 36, which are our March investment reports. The first report shows comparison between February and March, February 25 and March 25. Our February earnings were $302,000 proxy, and our March earnings were $322,000 proxy. The next page shows our March 24 through March 25 comparison. March 24 showed earnings of $387,000, which we had slightly more in our account at that point, because we were still paying out of our construction projects. We had about $90 million in our account at that point invested, and in March 25, we've got $81 million invested, and again, with earnings of approximately $322,000. No questions on that. Pretty straightforward. We can move forward to our February tax report. Our 2023 collection rate right now is at 93.42%, and our collection rate for 2024 is slightly ahead at 93.97%, about half a point quicker. Our tax collections in 2023, approximately $55 million, and the tax collections in 2024, approximately $56.5 million, so. Good, coming in slightly faster, but solid figures for our tax report. Any questions on that? We can move forward to our PO report. For any POs over $20,000, lots of things in that report this month. Our firewall, our SRO contract, we purchased a significant amount of band instruments coming for this year and next year coming up. There's a facility assessment fee in there. Also, there's some legal fees paid, fire sprinkler inspection report that's due annually. There's some fiber optics purchase in there, bus fuel, or fuel in general, some network equipment, some occupational and physical therapy. Hard to believe, we're $20,000 worth of juice for this PO. We've got some bus purchases in there that'll be coming in here in the next year. There's a little advertising and also some K computers in there. There are not any questions on the PO report? If not, that concludes the Budget and Finance Report for March. Dr. Kingman, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dindell. We do have one action item to discuss this evening, and before we go through our proposed agenda, and it's bid 25-003, and Mr. Henry's going to help us with that.
Thank you for having me here tonight. Tonight, I bring forth bid 25-003 Charter Bus Travel Services. Over the past several years, the Transportation Department has seen an increase in the need for contracted charter bus use for out-of-town travel. With the addition of more travel buses and additional drivers, this need has gone down, but the need still exists. To lower the cost and increase the efficiency of this process, it was determined that we should designate weekends when the need is high and bid these trips out. Seven high-volume travel dates were picked, and an RFP was sent to charter bus companies capable of this service. We received nine bids with eight capable of performing all trips. The scoring criteria was applied, and Safe Charters of TIE Texas had the lowest price and the highest score. The administration recommends approval of Safe Charters of TIE as our primary vendor for charter services. Total cost for Safe Charters to charter 42 buses on seven high-volume travel dates will be $126,694.42. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Henry, it seems like it's a valuable tool that we use to get these quotes out in front of knowing when we're going to need these buses in the fall, having to bid them on a short-term basis, which costs us a whole lot more, and even varying reports here vary from our bid at $127,000 approximately, all the way up to $236,000, so it could be an even wider swing if we had to do this on a short term. So thanks for the planning effort to identify when and where we need buses, because it saves the district a bunch of money.
This is the third year now that we'll do the pre, is it second or third?
We didn't do it last year, but we've done it, this will be the second time.
The second year?
Yes.
And if we need additional buses that weekend, they've agreed to help us on that as well?
Yes, we had language in there for that as well.
Any further questions?
I guess just a quick question. There's no local companies? All these are from out of town?
No, there are no local companies that do charters here. None to our knowledge, anyway.
And just to make sure, this is the style, the travel bus style that we've been getting, right?
Right, these are travel charters.
Right, not the...
Not yellow school buses.
Right, no, I know that, but I meant, they're not the ones with like the restrooms in them, they're the newer style that we've been getting. Is that right? Or are they the...
It would depend on the charter company, whether or not they had restrooms in them.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And I think, Dr. Kingman, just as a clarification, when we, every once in a while, we run into a situation where we have like Lakeview and Central out of town at the same time, and it takes 23 charter buses to get everybody there, and some of those leaving to be there by game time, or the band to be there when the game starts. And so that's one of the needs. We still have route drivers that drive until 5:00 in the evening, you know, delivering students, so to get buses there. So it's not, sometimes it's not even about having the number of charters, it's about having the drivers as well. So that's kind of the early play to the charter companies, to make sure we can get them all there and get them there on time.
Also, Dr. Brandon, is it true that these charter buses can travel at the speed limit, and like a yellow bus can only travel at 55 miles per max? Is that correct? So saves the students some time in getting here and there and the distance that we travel out here in West Texas, so.
All right. Any further questions regarding bid 25-003?
Dr. Kingman, with that, I'd recommend the approval of Safe Charters of TIE as our primary vendor for charter services. Total cost for Safe Charters to charter 42 buses on seven high-volume travel dates will be $126,694.42.
All right, do I have a second?
All second.
So a motion from Mr. Dindell, and a second from Dr. Mills. Any further board comments or questions? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All against, say the same. Motion passes 6-0. All right, before we do our proposed agenda, we are going to go into executive session under 551.074, which is Personnel Matters, and 551.072, which is Real Property, and we'll be back as quick as we can. All right, we are back from, I wonder where that went? We are back from executive session. We took no votes, no action was made, so now we will proceed with our proposed agenda for our April 21st, 2025 regular board meeting. So A is invocation, then we'll do our pledges, recognitions, and then we will get an update on Head Start programming considerations. Dr. Gomez, Dr. Brandon, do you all want to give us anything on that this evening?
I think you'll have some from Dr. Moran.
Yes.
Just continuing conversations, and we'd give you an update.
So that's more just an update for everybody?
And I'll make a quick comment. So on the Head Start programming, the Council of Governments and SAISD have been talking about the current facilities that they are in, which are our facilities, Day Elementary, Rio Vista Elementary, and we're just talking about how we can provide better facilities for them and try to turn this into a win-win. It also involves some discussion about the related services provided by West Texas Rehabilitation, because they have not been able to provide those for the last probably six to seven months, you know, due to some guidelines that the auditor became aware of, and so they have not been able to provide services for those students there that are three- and four-year-olds. And so we're working on a combination that can help this become a win-win-win, really, for the kids, for facilities, for West Texas rehab, and we're excited to offer you all information next Monday that I think you'll see as a really great and bold plan going forward.
And our update on academic programs and our summer programming, Dr. Gomez?
I plan to just give an overview of all the programs, an update on where we were with hiring, so that everyone was aware of, there's multiple offerings. Sometimes people think just the automatic elementary summer school. We run elementary, middle, Kinder Jump Start, ESY for special ed, so just to give an update.
And then update on the SASD Teacher Incentive Allotment Expansion application?
That's the easiest one. I do think you would probably want that in the regular meeting. I do think you would probably want that in the regular meeting, but an update before that is our applications. Our expansion applications are due no later than tomorrow. Ours has already been submitted, so we already have an, once your application is accepted, then you can add to it, but we do have to formally hear that the additional grades we've added have been approved. So we are excited about additional opportunities for compensation for a number of teachers.
Dr. Gomez, when you do that next week, I think just because the TIA is new to the district as a whole, I think it's important that we go kind of through why we started, where we did, with the limited, and I'm sure you're going to do all that, but maybe just so everyone understands.
Yes, sir.
You know, not just the update, but maybe what it is in its entirety. All right, and then the next will be, we're going to get an update on TEA accountability rating. Dr. Gomez, you're going to help us with that again next week?
Yes, I know that you all received information in Friday fax, and know that the only thing new with this information is the actual rating from the state, that we've had data for almost two years now, and I know that all of you are aware that we are currently this week and next week testing for the '25 school year, and this is information from '22, '23, and even from graduates from '21, '22, so it's multiple years old at this point.
Perfect. We will get that from you next week. I'm in charge of the annual required hours of continuing ed for school board members, and after our training session today and tomorrow at lunch, everyone will be up to date on that, and we will report that next week as well. So then we have consent items, our donations, and our minutes. We'll have, so let's look at our action items and talk about what we need to do there. Bills, accounts, and financial statements for March, we'll continue that as a regular. Dr. Brandon, do you want to give us the presiding judges? And we'll have a list of that for next week? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll keep that regular as well, just since we don't have the list. Let's talk about the Lakeview chiller replacement. You can talk about this now, but I wonder, does the board, do y'all want to, I mean, we don't have a lot of consent in regular items, do, I think there's a big item that's, do we want to just keep that as a regular item, just so we talk about where we are? And so, the board knows that we've had a problem with Lakeview chiller, we'll save your time this evening, and we'll let you do regular next week. We can do, but come back up. Curriculum and instruction materials. This is just one added vendor, I believe.
Yes.
Any comments?
Just a standard adder to a current existing bid for a curriculum vendor?
So, that can be consent unless there's no other consent. And then, the super, Dr. Skelton, the superintendent's recommendations for the '25, '26 teacher and other professional contracts. We'll get that list, oh, that's right here on this.
Good evening. You guys got the green folders with the list. There's several hundreds of names in there for you guys to preview. We wanted to give that to you a week in advance so that you could go through those and preview them before we actually had an action item on it. So that list is everybody that we're taking to the board, to you guys for the April contracts.
So do we, you want, does the board want to make that consent as part, and then if someone reviews it this weekend, has something we need to pull, we can pull?
Yes, I can see it.
Consent for now, and then if, in reviewing of them, if there's any questions, email Dr. Skelton, and then also let me know that y'all want to pull it from consent, so that we can do that before next week. So right now, that will be consent. Other than that, we'll have announcements that early voting will start on the 22nd, the day after our meeting. Election day will be May 3rd, and then we'll have finance pre-agenda workshops and the regular board meeting, May 12th and May 19th of next month. Any further board questions or comments, pretty, as far as action items or anything else that needs to be added to the agenda? No? All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.